...to hold school board meetings at 4:00 p.m. and to the rest of the board members for supporting that and voting yes. If any of you doubt it, that we would have teachers in attendance. Take a look at this seat of red. These teachers have come here after school to make their voice heard. And I want to thank you in advance for listening to them and their concerns. Having meetings at 4:00 p.m. allows our teachers to spend that valuable instructional time with students and not have to take time off to be here. So, thank you, thank you. This means a lot to us and we look forward to attending all future 4:00 p.m. school board meetings.
I serve the St. Johnstown School District since August of 2000. I am a veteran teacher on what is called a grandfathered status. At Thursday's bargaining session, the district's chief negotiator said that if grandfathered teachers want to make more money, they just need to move to pay for performance. Teachers should not be told to give up our professional services contract and access to due process to earn a living wage. We need and deserve respect from our district, not derision. Your veteran teachers are the reason this district became number one 12 years ago. And teachers deserve to be a budget priority, not a budget afterthought.
My name is Andrea Clarkin. I'm a St. Johnstown teacher and parent of two children. I'm in 6th grade and I've had amazing teachers in kindergarten and I've learned a lot of things. When I was younger, I always thought that teachers got paid the same as everyone else did. However, I have learned that that's not true. My mom and my teachers work very hard every day and stay late after school. Please pay teachers like my mom, like they're important to you because they are important to me.
My name is Andrea Clarkin. I'm a St. Johnstown teacher and parent of two children. Teaching is my second career, as my daughter said. After I left my first job out of college, which was in the juvenile prison system, I went to pharmaceutical sales and I make $100,000 a year. I left because not only was it too unstable, but I didn't love the job. I love this job, but I don't get paid enough to survive on my teaching salary alone. I have to have two incomes. If I wanted to, I could go back to the pharmaceutical industry and be making $100,000 plus within three months. I could go to work for a VA contractor writing curriculum for their HR department for $75,000 by the end of January. But I don't love those jobs. I love teaching. Without teachers, there's no desk, there's no Forty Orange, there's no schools, there's no students, there's no education system. We keep doing the same thing in this district over and over again. Paying teachers such a low wage that they can't afford to live here unless they have two incomes. So, what do we expect? Do we expect that teachers will move here to teach when they could go to four other districts near us and get paid enough to live? That teachers are going to stay here when they have to work two jobs to support a household on their own and have no time with their family? Or to rest because they have to go from their teaching job to their extra job? There's nowhere in this county where a teacher can live without needing to have two incomes because their teaching career in this county doesn't pay them enough to live. What do we expect? How can we be the best teachers we can be when we're worried about going bankrupt and surviving? We have to work together to solve this problem or we're going to keep losing teachers at a time where our kids need stability. And if I sound frustrated, it's because I am. All the charts and budgets and comparisons don't mean anything to us if we can't pay our bills. I love my job and I love my students. And I stay in this district because my whole life is in St. Johnstown. I want to be that teacher who sees their students in the grocery store or the community event. I love that we're the number one school district in the state. Truly, I'm very proud of that fact. We've worked very hard for that. However, I can't go to the DLE website, print out our number one ranking, mail it to my mortgage company and pay my mortgage with them. I have to pay my mortgage with money. And I'm asking you, and we're all here asking you, please, make us a priority. Pay us like we're a priority. Pay us like you want us to stay here and work to make this school district continue to be the best school district in the state.
I've been a teacher in St. Johnstown for 30 years, starting in St. Augustine High in August 1992. My boys are both graduates of Aeternum Ennis and I'm proud to say that. As you can see, I do not live in St. Augustine. Why? Because even 22 years ago, I could not afford to live here on East Drusari. Now, I have no idea how teachers are able to do it. They're working second jobs. I've worked second jobs on and off for over 20 of my 30 years that I've taught for this county. When a teacher works a second job, students are not benefiting. They're not getting the best teacher because the teacher's time is spent elsewhere. I know this very well. When the recession hit and things were tight, teachers understood there was no money for raises. We tightened our belts right along the district. But we gave you an inch and it seems like you're taking a mile. When COVID hit, teachers came to the rescue. We learned how to teach digitally from home. The next year, we stood up again to restore our own health and safety. We came to schools so parents could work. We not only taught in person, but digitally as well, live streaming our lessons to students. This took hours and hours of time. But we created, delivered, and graded lessons and made it work and made the best for our students. Now, it is time for you to stand up and deliver. Please listen to us. Teaching is supposed to be a profession like doctors and lawyers, but I do not see doctors or lawyers working second jobs. I see this as a profession, not a babysitting service. Our students in St. Johnstown deserve the best. They've received the best, but now is the time we are losing teachers. Teachers are tired from working second jobs. They're worried how they're going to pay their bills. We have teachers who are not qualified, who have substitute teachers covering classes. Your best teachers are retiring. They're looking at other areas to go into and they're leaving the profession. I love working for St. Johnstown. It is my life, learning these teachers. But I want more than just saying you appreciate me. We want you showing that you appreciate us. So, this is time for St. Johnstown to make us a priority, not an afterthought.
I consider this afternoon to share my story. Both as a mother of four in the district, having children in 11th, 8th, and 1st grade. As a teacher of 10 years, teaching only in this district, I urge you to please put teachers as a priority. We are failing for students. I witnessed firsthand the predicament that administrators have on their hands. Qualified teachers are moving our profession. More and more positions aren't being filled adequately. Students are left with subs, that is, if one picks up the job. I'm heartbroken that I'm a public educator and I truly believe that my own children are not receiving the education they deserve. My husband was born in St. Augustine. I chose this town and attended Flagler College in the late 90s and I fell in love with this wonderful city. The revolving door of teachers my children have had, both in middle and high school, is truly unacceptable. How on earth can a high school chemistry class, pre-ID, be taught in a band room? How does my student, my child, not have one lab during her high school chemistry experience? As a science teacher and mother, this absolutely blows my mind. If this was an isolated incident, you know, I might understand. But ELA teachers have left, band teachers have left, with subs that fill those jobs have left. So, now my children are not being taught by qualified teachers who have mastered their craft. Many of my former students have the same complaints and would share a similar story. This infuriates me. I know how hard I work for my students and how much I love my students. Yes, I love my middles and all their awkwardness and their quirkiness. I love watching them grow, both in the classroom and on the court. I wish that same investment was reciprocated for my own children. In the five years of teaching middle school, I have mentored three new teachers and one substitute. I've watched the arts and the music programs turn over. I've watched whole departments of science and math turn over. Veteran teachers keep leaving because they don't feel valued, they don't feel respected, and they truly don't feel that they're a priority. What is administration to do? How do they build up these programs? How do we give the students of St. Johnstown what they do deserve? How do you give my children what they deserve? You have to do better. We have to do better for our kids. Please make teachers a priority.
I teach high school, so I have a teacher lens and a parent lens. I'll say as a parent, thank you so much to the elementary teachers because I can handle middles and high school, but I cannot handle elementary. And the stories that I hear from our children about the things that their teachers have to go through appall me. The discipline, it's like a babysitting thing and I wonder about learning. And it's not only the teacher's fault, it's our society. We all know, we go to the store, things are so different. And I just worry about the future of education if we don't take action. Thankfully, like I said, they have not had effect from the sub and teacher shortage like in the middle school and high school experiences I have. I'm so grateful for that. But I worry like, will they ever have a veteran teacher? And will they ever have that experience that we all had? I know we did because teachers didn't leave like what's happening right now. I would be sad if they don't have that. What I really want to focus on though is, you all said that so well, all the things you said. I did owe them all that. What I'd like to say is that at a bargaining session, it was said that most of our money is spent on resources. We spend a lot of money on resources that other counties do. I think that we missed that our greatest resource are our teachers. I think teachers have the power to teach, time, pay, all the things. We will show you what we can do, what we used to do, okay? It'll be like magic. I also want to mention, because this is a side item, but I'm in my 15th year. I've been in St. Johnstown since 2010, except when I had my twins. I thought I wanted to move to be with my family, so I was young and I resigned. So, I have a breaking service. I don't get paid for my master's degree now, which is in education and literacy, which baffles me because daily I include reading and writing strategies in my classroom. I mention that because it leads to taking action and show us through actions that were appreciated. So, thank you so much for mentioning it. But we really need to feel it and so pay, time to be able to spend. And I tell my students, I'm so sorry, like I have two blocks of planning time and I have like 100 essays all the time to grade. I don't know when I'm supposed to do that, you guys. Like, I would love some tips if anybody has that. I'm here for 15, I don't know how to manage it. You can feel my frustration because I feel like I can't do mom or teacher 100% anymore. How do we do those at 100%? Thank you so much.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Teachers, every members of public and the board. My name is Lisa L. Ward. And I'm going to read you my response to an email from Mr. Forson back in November when he asked for suggestions on how to deal with this teacher shortage. So, how? To figure out how, we need to take a hard look at the why. This will be my 17th year teaching, pre-K, ESE, and PK awards through elementary school. I love this school, I love this district, and despite recent challenges, I love this state. When I first started teaching there 17 years ago, we had one curriculum, a one-page observation, and one assessment. Fast forward to today, we have an annual contract system where teaching is now a temporary assignment and not a career, three curriculums, a 23-objective observation, another 10-objective observation, unreasonable class sizes, a negative organizational culture, not enough planning time, especially for ESE teachers, a workload not attainable within contract hours, personal money spent on supplies, and one of the lowest salaries in the United States, and now a negative perception of public school teachers by the parents of the children that we work so hard to love, teach, and keep safe. That is what hurts the most. Teaching is not looking good. We need to chip away at this why before we can address the how. And when it comes down to what's keeping most of us going at this point is the who. The children that we serve and the families that support us. This is not new information here. I've been speaking here about these things for almost 10 years. We are now faced with a catastrophic staff shortage and all I can think of is, I knew this was coming. Who would want to do all these things that I mentioned for the pay that we are being offered? This state needs to wake up and St. Johnstown needs to be the leader of what's right for our teachers and our students. I am a St. Johnstown teacher, I was a St. Johnstown parent, and in a few years, I'll be a St. Johnstown grandparent for life. So, I'm asking you, let's do what's right. Let's keep our teachers and our students a priority. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Hitzman. Again, thank the board for doing this, thanks for presenting. Merry Christmas to you guys. I've been teaching for 20 years, the last five years in St. Augustine High School. St. Augustine High School has been expressing a frustration with leadership for the school for many years. I've advocated, we have advocated through the union, completed school climate surveys, met with the superintendent, and more. Now, I'm standing here today for a commitment and promise to my colleagues and as their representative to bring those concerns to you, our St. Johnstown school board. All of the following occurred this semester. Our teachers have serious concerns regarding safety and compliance. We are understaffed and although that's not an issue that could be solved immediately, it's how that issue is being dealt with that's creating more problems. We have non-certified staff in EBD teaching positions and additional EBD teaching need. To alleviate that need, EBD students are placed in a classroom in the Gen Ed setting. As one example, five EBD students, some of whom are requiring mandatory 1-on-1 instructions are in a classroom with 23 other students, 13 of which have ESE. There are concerns about being out of compliance with federal and state laws regarding ESE support. Class loads are too high to be in compliance with IEPs. We have, when you have two, we have a need for two additional ESEs and two more support staff. Due to the shortage, one of our ESE teachers was denied lunch until November. This is creating a situation that is nearly impossible to manage in some classrooms, seriously interfering with the learning environment for all. Many conflicts in the classroom are boiling into the hallways. One of our dean was recently injured, breaking up a fight. In a separate incident and student-involved interaction, one of our teachers was injured but told they could not seek medical attention because there was no one to cover their class. Moving names on paper to give the appearance of a full staff is not a real solution. One teacher was assigned a classroom roster for auditing purposes, even though they had never actually been in charge of that classroom. It is my hope that you will help us address these concerns to improve not only the learning environment, but to help ensure the safety of our students and staff. In addition, ensuring that our school is in compliance is these rules are there to improve the learning environment. Okay, on a personal note on the topic du jour, okay? To hear our, at the negotiations recently, that, you know, one of our justifications is that we are swimming in services. You know, that's, we have so many extra services, a boat in the districts next to us. When we that are on the ground in the classroom are worried about compliance and to be told we're swimming in services, just, it's hard for us to swallow. I thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
A year ago, I was here and my comments were, and I was crying as I was talking a year ago, that I become a teacher after 28 years of teaching, started in 91, that I finally decided that I did not tell a young person to become a teacher. And obviously, it's gotten worse. I look at my students in my classroom and I love my classroom, I love my students. I'm going to be teaching. I put Beth McBride forever teacher. I'm going to be a teacher forever. I love what I do. But there's all of these little things that are constantly adding to teachers' place. I did that at the summer meeting. I wrote up all these things that are now being accepted from teachers. There's a breaking point and we're finally feeling it in St. Johnstown. I think this has been going on probably 15 years across the country. But St. Johnstown is a special little place, that things weren't, it wasn't that way here. But we finally, I finally come up and we're getting affected by the teacher shortages. And every single person, I'm not kidding, but right now, we're missing a registrar at my school and all the people in the front staff are having to cover for that person. But you know what? They're not getting a salary for that registrar position, but they're doing all the work for the registrar position. Same thing with teachers that are out. You have a teacher that's out because they left, go get another job and cannot even teach. And so, the teachers with their PLC, they're covering and helping the subs. There's, but nobody's getting paid for that. So, it's starting to pile on and pile on. And your parent people says, "Such amazing," because I was listening, like, they're saying, everything I want to say, they're saying it's so overwhelming. I want to be able to look at my students, their age groups, and go, "I think I'm talking to becoming teachers." I want to think that way. I do that. And right now, I can't, but I want to. Because I have some kids in our class right now that will make amazing teachers someday. But I would not go and give that to them because the way it's going right now is the burden of becoming a teacher is getting worse and worse and worse and worse. Between all the things we have to do, it comes to the sailor drills and all the sailor testing, which I think we all agree, progress monitoring is testing. So, whatever they said, it all says, "I'm a sailor," it says, "Oh, you know, I'm a teacher and that's incorrect." So, thank you for listening and thank you for the four hour meeting. Same thing, thank you, thank you.
My name is Megan Naan-Everard and I love teaching. I love my job and I love being a teacher. I'm a proud Toquay Creek Toro, horns up. I'm the proud teacher of Claudia McKay, who received our Character Council award today. And I'm a proud St. Johnstown educator and been teaching here for over 12 years. I'm a proud mentor to lots of new teachers in our county. And I'm also a proud sponsor of the Florida Future Educators of America chapter at Toquay Creek High School, where we encourage young individuals to go into this career. And despite all of those things, I don't know how much longer I can do this job. You know, there are just a few things teachers shouldn't have to fight for. They shouldn't have to fight for a livable wage. Teachers shouldn't have to fight for the resources they need to be able to do their jobs. Teachers shouldn't have to fight for a seat at the table where decisions are made. And yet, here we are in the number one county in the state of Florida and we're fighting for all of these things. Our teachers, despite being the driving force behind this tremendous growth, are finding it even more difficult to afford to live here. That's not a great place to work. Our teachers, despite working in an affluent and growing county, we work in a technology desert where we have to bargain and share and try to use the same resources. We have difficulty making copies for our students in the morning. We don't have access to what our students need. Our teachers, despite having specialized training and years of experience and working in the trenches every single day with these students, are not asked or invited to the table when making decisions that affect all people. That's not a great place to work. Do you know what would be a great place to work? Somewhere that actually pays our first-rate salary for our first-rate performance. That would be a great place to work. A great place to work would be somewhere that provides us all the resources we need to do our jobs effectively, including access to technology and paper to make copies for our students. A great place to work would be somewhere that includes educators' perspectives and voices in the conversation when making important decisions about non-negotiables or developing new policies. That would be a great place to work. We know that making this district an even better place to work is not going to be easy. We know ourselves, because we do it all the time, that balancing the budget is not easy. But as Superintendent Forson said in an email to staff November 2nd, this work is hard. It's supposed to be hard. Children are too important to do this any other way. Thank you.
I grew up, maybe I want to make, you know me, I wanted to be a teacher. My mom would come in and I would have all of my dolls set up and I would be teaching them whatever my homework was that day. I honestly don't know what I would do if I weren't a teacher, but like Megan, I don't know how much longer I can do this job. I've been a teacher for 13 years and I've taught in Marshall States and Emory County. I've never felt more pressure put on me as a teacher and been treated as less of a professional than I have since my move to St. Johnstown. I remember bargaining, so I get to see firsthand how this district uses its teachers and budgets this money based on how it negotiates the working conditions and salaries. The view that St. Johnstown is a great place to work and people should just want to work here is no longer the case. I've heard that this comment made multiple times at the bargaining table. And while that may have been a philosophy that has worked in the past, the ever-growing amount of teacher vacancies is showing that that is no longer the case. In terms of the budget, a trend we keep seeing is that the district puts a lot of emphasis on sticking to a budget and future projections, which I'm glad it does. We should be physically conservative. However, and that is an item on the agenda, letter T, request for approval of the five-year district facilities work plan. You're great at budgeting for future growth, like opening new schools and facilities, and you're great at maintaining a healthy funding balance for many days. I would like to see you continue to budget for the future, but focus it on teacher salaries. We are a school district and while having proper running facilities and school brands are important, what is even more essential to a properly-run school district is its teachers. So, put teacher salaries on the budget and stop making teacher salaries an afterthought. Teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. So, if teachers are not a priority, students are not a priority. If we want to remain the top-performing district, your five-year plan needs to include teacher salaries as a top priority. Thank you.
Good evening. As I look around this room and I'm thinking about all these experiences that all these, all these fellow teachers have and I just, I'm amazed. Every single person in this room is here for a reason. Like, and it's just, well, I'd like to thank everybody here for taking the time to listen to all of us as we have something to say. And that you guys are willing to take the time to listen, that means a lot. I think that helps demonstrate how we are one big school district, how we are one of the best in this state. And how do we stay that way? By listening to each other, by listening to what the teachers have to say. Now, I actually, I have a very limited experience when it comes to the education field. I've only done teaching for nine years and they've all been pretty much at the same school, St. Augustine High School. The high school. But before I was a teacher, I was in the US Army. I'm a proud veteran. Thank you. I was part of the initial invasion force into Iraq. I was on the mission against Saddam Hussein. I was on the mission for Uday Quazi. I was on the mission for Bush when he landed in Iraq for Thanksgiving. It was part of his security detail. I did not get any turkey that Thanksgiving party. In that environment, in Iraq, there was a lot of stressors. There was a lot of things that I was concerned about, but it was more about my personal safety. I had very few stressors when I was worried about observations. I was very concerned about, you know, living. Today, I feel that I have not, not the same stressors. Today, I have more concerns about what we're going to do, me and my wife, moving forward when it comes to our paychecks. You see, earlier this year, lightning struck my house and it blew out our irrigation system. Just recently, we have a leaking drain in our bathroom. We have very, very many problems in our house. All that we have to pay for and take care of, pay is what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
My name is Emily L., but I actually am here to represent a coworker of mine who cannot be here today. I have recently tendered my resignation with this district and have been asked to share why. I hope to do so in the hope that you will see the need for change. I started at the beginning of this school year, coming from another district, in hopes of finding a fresh start and a way to every night and passion for education. The few people I met right away were gracious and small. I started at the beginning of this school year coming from another district in hopes of finding a fresh start and a way to every ignite and passion for education. The few people I met right away were gracious to welcoming and I gained friends in this process. I did my best to embrace the St. John's difficulties, parent pressure and student behavior among them. Along with this new stress, I was put in the position of balancing two core contact areas. One PSC heavily monitored and scrutinized and the other basically left to devolve into chaos. I floundered and struggled. My one source of help, our ILC, left our school and we were on our own as a team. I've had two successful observations, but found no real feedback or willingness to help me improve my path from administration. I came here to be better. I hoped I would find mentors who were interested in creating flourishing educators and to be compensated fairly for my efforts. It did not feel like that, but I tried to push through anyway until I could not. I'm told your board says that there is no more money for teacher pay, but devolve, the county I came from, found a way. In fact, if I'd stayed there, I would have received a raise approved by taxpayer dollars and received my raise from my previous year's evaluation. It's truly disrespectful that you cannot find funds to keep teachers. If others can, so can you. Your teachers are not a joke. We are the ones ensuring your children get the quality education that you say is so fabulous. You cannot be a top district without top educators. And you will have no educators if you do not change how you view us. Actions speak louder than words and I hope that you can show the teachers that remain here will be treated better than I was. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jess Baschata. I'm the head of the physics department for Pedro Menendez High School. Um, I've come to ask a request of all of you on the board. When I teach physics and I teach science, I teach my children, my kids, my students. I teach them literacy in science so that when they're approached with a problem, they can go to the source and find a solution. They don't need intermediary and they don't need someone telling them exactly what, uh, the science means. They can go and look at the source. And that's what I'm here to ask you to do. I'm here to ask them to go to the source, look at the budget with their own eyes, please. I have been told probably exactly what you've been told about the budget. Well, when you go and you look and you look at it through the eyes comparing it to other counties and you look at things, you'll see some things on there. Um, I did notice, you know, lady in the presentation earlier, her numbers were a smidge higher than me. But I'm not so sure we need a smidge. By the way, I speak only for myself, if I was to clarify. Um, when I look at student growth, I'm getting roughly four percent a year. But when I look at the end-of-rent appropriations increase every year, I'm seeing about five and a half percent. We're giving the money from the state to improve this county. It needs to be budgeted better. When I look down and look at the other counties around me, I've got a nine-year running tally of the amount of money being spent on instructional staff versus the amount of total expenditures and we lag way behind. The average amongst all the counties that we consider to be contiguous, like size, all of that, uh, is roughly, if you average all of them over the nine years, you get sixty-three point four percent. Of which when right now we're bringing in fifty-nine percent of our own, we're behind by several points. In, I don't know, agreement with Mr. Forson earlier, what we did last year was great. What we did last year was an expenditure of sixty-one percent, okay? That is still behind the average. We would have to repeat that year by year after year to meet up with everybody else, okay? Take a look at it, I encourage you. Now, I know that, uh, chief of staff leaders would love for me to use the transparency numbers, not the AFR numbers. And I think Mr. Forson would like me to use as well in his speech earlier. I don't gather to all the way through those yet, I just sounded. But if you look just at last year, twenty-twenty-one, you would see that a direct school expenditure at the five thousand block comes to, um, fifty-seven percent across all those counties that we just mentioned are contiguous, like sizes. And we are only coming in, uh, half a percent behind them. So no matter what numbers I'm looking at, if I look at last year, we're coming in behind. I encourage you to look at the budget, the money could be spent better. I appreciate your time very much.
Hello, um, I'm Elizabeth. I have kids, I have my school kids deployed and I'm a proud teacher at Southwood Elementary. Um, I've been in St. John's County for six years. My husband is retired military veteran, retired twenty-four years in January. And I couldn't wait to be a teacher because it's finally my turn. I have followed him over the world, across the states. I could stay home long, I took a lot of jobs to get us through. And now I'm forty-one years old and I'm finally going to be a teacher. And I have to say, I love it. I'm at a school that's tough, we have tough kids, we have tough families, but I make a difference every day. We didn't have PTO presidents, you won't get either. We didn't have parents to man the booths at our Winter Wonderland or our Fall Festival. So my kids, my husband stepped up and we loved it. We loved their smiling faces. I get out there and our last spring's weight, dancing, laughing, chipping with his head cut off because the kids loved it and I do it every day. My husband, who is early retired, has passed six months and came out on base with a government contractor. Guess what? He's an instructor. He makes three times as much as I do. He's never been to college a day in his life. He has no teaching certificate, he doesn't know anything about best practice and he's not evaluated on even the five-point plan. But his employers trust him and our government trusts him to train the sales for running the engineering plans on nuclear ships, protecting our safety. But my safety isn't protected, because I have desks thrown at me. That fun is phenomenal for the government outside the classroom or for the kids that bring things in their backpacks. But what about my safety from the daily threats, of having things thrown at me? Being hit, kicked, punched, bit? The things that I spend my husband's military retirement on to make the classroom look nice for these kids and to make it feel like home. Is ripped up, destroyed and just disregarded. And I'm told sorry is not worth more than ten dollars a piece, so I'm out of luck. I love what I do and I'll always be a teacher. My daughter wanted to be a teacher and they seem to hide from the flatteries mimicking me. My daughter doesn't want to be a teacher anymore because she doesn't want to have to have a roommate. And that breaks my heart because she would have followed in my footsteps and she would have been your best, greatest new asset. She probably would have made more than me starting out and that's okay because we all have better for our kids than we have for ourselves, right? And all the family and all the athletes that come through. Mr. Forson, I hope you're proud of me, but I can't even read your emails because as a role-playing employee, I can't open up the video I've written. Thanks. I'm going to read from my phone. If I'm not in touch with you, my name is Caitlin Hall and my address is on the common card. I wanted to share my love story with St. John's County School District. I walked into a fourth grade classroom in here at Woods Creek Elementary School. I never got to attach to friends since I moved six times in four years. A teacher who was going to join a club where I met my best friend friends. In two thousand thirteen, on my eighth grade Washington DC trip, I got the flu. Miss Hemmy waved her loving arms and took care of me the whole trip as an older student daddy. In two thousand fourteen, I started Barter Hill High School and the first day of the first trip, I barely made a mile. But back senior year, my coach had me running miles and miles and miles. In two thousand eighteen, the minute I wanted to finish the class without death, Amy Hubert made that goal happen by offering me a job at Barter in the Agribusiness Program. In two thousand twenty, a three-year-old scout cast a soft potential and he asked to teach sixth and seventh grade science. On November ninth, I started a new journey in my life and met my first class of kids. It was like falling in love all over again. In two thousand twenty-two, I was named St. John's County School District Lucky Teacher of the Year. I felt like this moment was God telling me what I was supposed to do with my life. This year I made third group of students and every day God reminded me of my purpose. Middle school is ruseless, but when a child comes running in and helps you because she was just adopted and you were the first person she wants to tell, your heart absolutely melts. Not love stories I've tried, but mine does. That same night, I grabbed a look at my husband's arms and we cried. We talked about adopting because his best friend grew up in the foster system. However, I know if I stay a teacher, we could not afford to raise a child. I struggle with knowing that God made me a teacher, but staying in St. John's County School District with current policy and pay puts my husband in a situation where he feels he must be a superhero. Just this past summer, a hardcore baby told me we couldn't live in St. John's County School District. So I bought our first house in Duvall. I never noticed as a student, but I had amazing and well-trained teachers leading me along the way. My kids will always have an ambitious, enthusiastic and loving teacher, but I cannot continue on this path forever. Please hear the teacher's call for higher pay and better teaching conditions because without change, I will have to feel alone with many of my peers. Thank you for your time and providing us with the best case of life. I hope this is not the beginning of our love story. Thank you.
My name is Abigail Mararia. I've been a St. John's County student since two thousand eighteen. As a student and child of a teacher, I am offended by the current teacher pay. We have all these plans to make new schools, but if we keep going like this, there will be no teachers to go in those schools. I wanted to be a teacher, but I know that it would kill my mom. When you don't have actual teachers in classrooms, they're wild, which puts more stress on the teachers that I do actually have. Thankfully this year I'm, sorry, um, thankfully this year I am lucky enough to have a long-term sub that only planned on staying one quarter, but I ended up staying the whole semester. I see that effort and I see the stress. I don't want to, I don't see the leadership committed to them and I can't say they're committed to me. And that's just, it breaks my heart. Thank you.
My name is Jeff McBride. We are losing teachers and it is not a mystery to teachers. Teachers become teachers because of the kids. They discover they are energized by the kids and believe they can be a positive guide in their lives. No teacher chose to get into teaching to make sure I can score an incrementally higher percentage year-to-year on a high-stakes multiple choice test that the kids don't care about. No teacher chose to get into teaching to make sure I can follow every little rule and procedure that administrators come up with and use up all of my time that I would spend for the kids. No teacher chose to get into teaching to make sure I abandoned twenty kids because I will have to spend all of my time managing a single disruptive student because I will be afraid to be fired. No teacher chose to get into teaching to make sure I stand alone when a parent is unhappy that the child is not performing to their liking. Teachers instead love what they do and they give their best and they give, and they give, and they give. My solution? Admin, stop burdening teachers and start supporting them. Stop buying new textbooks for ten years. It's an addiction. Pay teachers a competitive salary. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Lyne and I'm in North Florida. My parents lived here back in two thousand eight when the average house was selling for about two to three hundred thousand dollars. I graduated from Eastside High School when you had decided to be a teacher. Came back to Berthas County because we claim to be the best. And of course I believe that. I believe we have some of the best teachers here. But unfortunately, looking at my future, like my other teachers my age who haven't happened to be able to meet anyone to marry, make money in them, they can't afford to live here or at most counties in West. The rent has gone sky-high and I know inflation is temporary, hopefully. But at this point, we are able to plan for schools to be built up to two thousand and forty-two, but we can't plan how we're going to staff all those schools if we don't care about the teachers' pay and the teachers that can't afford to teach next year. Thank you.
I'm from Florida. I'm teaching in St. John's County. This is my twenty-fourth year. I showed women in any school in St. John's County. My grandchildren now attend school in St. John's County. I've always been very proud to say that I work for St. John's County. But now I'm on the end of a pay scale. I make maybe six thousand dollars more for twenty-four years of teaching than a starting teacher. I worked two jobs I have the past six, seven years. I love teaching, it is my passion. I would do it again, even for the pain that I'm getting. But I'm very not, I'm looking at the budgets, I'm hearing a lot about budgets. I have a budget. I find money for necessities and needs. And I need our school system to look at our teachers as a need and something they can find the money for because we can't continue forever feeling devalued because monetary compensation is not there for us. And I just want you to finish hard when you look at that budget about making your teachers feel valued. Thank you.